Right at the time I was going through, I presented it in my license book. If you're passing another vehicle, do you have to obey the speed limit?
Yes.
In passing?
Yes. Does Jamie do that? No. She didn't do that, Jamie.
No, I don't.
Yes, you are to obey the speed limit laws at all times, no matter if you're passing or not, in North Dakota.
Yeah, Minnesota was that way, but they changed that law and abolished basically the speed limit entirely while you're passing.
That's crazy.
So, if you're gonna pass, step her down.
Yeah.
But then as soon as you clear.
No, I have to say, I agree with Minnesota.
How quickly can you get around? Just get around, it'll be done.
The goal would be to get back into your lane as soon as as possible. So, even if there was to be an exception, we were full of limits, but to say like, can't go more than ten, might be more than seventy-five, but at least allow a little bit of extra speed. I didn't know, I was curious, I thought I was in North Dakota because I haven't, I haven't followed that.
Unless they've changed it since I went to the academy, which was a while ago, so maybe they did change it. But when I was at the academy, when we did the traffic law, it was that you had to remain on.
Minnesota literally changed that while I was in my druthers at Placer, my advisor coming in and telling me.
I just wanna safely get around someone and be back in my lane.
No.
With my very heavy lead foot. I will never deny it.
History is kind of a unique thing.
I will accept any consequence.
Things change.
I come from driving awards.
So that makes history, but if you lived through it, it was a current event. So I had a teacher in high school that talked about, kind of that concept, that between current events and history, which was current event at one point, he's like, so I was in like first grade in nineteen fifty-nine, and the teacher goes, well, you know, exciting news, um, Alaska and Hawaii are now the forty-ninth and fiftieth street. And you're like, oh yeah, I guess they always have it for the state.
Right.
For some people's life.
Yup, yup.
And they bugged me around almost ninety-five years ago, she was talking about the history and the history.
I know we're like not back in session, but did this?
Yeah, I did not get that on there, so I made a note, I'm gonna put it on there next time.
Next time, okay, okay.
To save.
That's what I was just gonna ask.
I didn't even see it, it was.
You sure can?
Oh, sure. I just, it was stuck with my meeting minutes, and then I kinda take it from you two.
Where are you taking it?
We're trying to save paper.
Oh, okay.
I'm kinda over my limited.
You're over your full?
I've been taught to.
You've been taught to?
I do too many.
By three M, as in you're really supporting that?
Is it weird?
No.
Cause I'm like.
I even put new contacts this morning.
It did not. Focus eyes, you can do it.
Your monthly dividend is going up.
It did not happen.
We can't even start without them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are there third, third one for our second class?
No, we don't.
Usually you don't have to go that deep. Well, and when it was only three, I mean, really only needed two to have it, because if that third one was the only one that showed up, you couldn't have anything anyway.
Right.
Number five, it was hyper.
I think we do a quick deputization.
That's, that's the.
That'd make the front page, wouldn't it?
Right. Maybe AG's act is a little busy, probably.
We don't need their notice.
I heard the people told me I screwed. They're paying for any back current job. Wow, wonderful.
The kind of foot of the nation's right.
I don't know about that. I might feel a little tricky.
Well, wait a minute, we're too young. See, Rick shows up.
Not necessarily a conflict of interest, but the bias of the local media could.
Oh, by the way, Travis, if you imagine.
Okay, I kinda figured it's all. When I peered in and there was nobody in here, I'm like, I think I can come back in.
Thank you for stepping out, rather than just sitting in the crowd.
Yeah, no, it was kinda like, I don't want any.
Nope.
Nope, we're gonna re, okay, we'll reconvene at eleven forty-seven. I guess, Alice, Brent Steiner, HR updates.
Good morning, Alice.
Good morning. I will make a brief as possible for all of you.
Alice, if we need Todd for anything, he went to his office, he'll come back over if we need him to. So if there's anything you need his input on, he's coming back.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, just an update on our open positions, besides the new ones for the highway department, which I'll start advertising right away today, for those seasonal positions. Um, Deputy Sheriff, no applications received, we're not alone. You have the State Highway Patrol looking, you have lots of counties looking, cities looking. I even suggested maybe we go up to Law Enforcement Training Academy in person to try to recruit a little bit. I, I just maybe go to Florida recruit, if you guys will send me to Florida, I'll go recruit in Florida.
But you do have to bring some advocates back.
Oh, that's, yeah, okay.
Like where you're at.
Yeah.
That's one concern of mine, is feeling that Deputy Sheriff role, but we're just gonna have to think outside the box of where we can look. Um, Ministry of Assistant at the Extension Office, we do have an interview next Monday, and it looks very promising, so let's hope this one is, will work out for them. They really need the extra help. We even talked about maybe a college student during the summer to help out with the fare, which is the fare and stuff, because we can't find somebody permanently, but maybe this one will work out, so.
Yeah, generally they're May to August is kind of their really.
Yes.
Busy time.
Yeah.
That part-time becomes almost full-time.
Correct, so that's why we thought maybe a college student, if this one doesn't work out. Um, so another thing I wanna talk about is the timekeeping for salaried exempt employees. Right now, there's kind of a difference between some salary exempt are only turning in their time off that they take, vacation or sick leave, while others exempt salaried are supposed to be keeping their time sheets, which is totally against what exempt salary positions are. So I wanna just make it uniform across the county, that if you're salary exempt, the only thing you have to turn into payroll is if you have time off, a full day of time off for sick leave or vacation days. Okay? Otherwise, there's no time sheets.
Okay, I wanna make sure I get it right. So you want after salary exempt, so, okay, so tell me what you said after salary exempt.
There will be no more time sheets, the only thing that will be turned into payroll is if they have a full day off for vacation or sick leave.
And do you have a form for that or something?
I will have a form for all the salaried people to fill out, and I will provide it to you guys as well for payroll purposes, so you know what it'll look like.
Do we need to make a motion on that, Alice?
I would prefer to, so that it's, and then I'll make sure it's updated and then.
And I'm in abstain from this, Gina's.
Drink.
Twenty, yep. I'll make a motion that we have salary exempt, correct?
Correct.
Yep. Only have to turn in the.
Vacation or something.
For vac, full vacation and full sick leave, and the paperwork both provided by HR.
Okay, slow down, because I wanna get it right.
Okay.
So, okay, so only turn in.
For vacation.
For vacation and sick leave.
And sick leave.
And then what'd you say?
Per the paperwork provided by Human Resource Director.
Work from HR.
Yep.
And the understanding is because we're on call twenty-four seven.
This minute, this minute.
We don't know what our. Oh, sorry.
Okay, that was your motion?
Yes.
And, uh, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, now Alice.
Okay, sorry about that. And the reason for that is because the salaried people were expected to be on call twenty-four seven. We don't know what our hours are gonna be.
Right.
So, one day we could be working twelve hours, the next day we could be working four. And when you're salary exempt, if you keep track of time, and you find out later they really shouldn't have been salary exempt, they could turn around and sue the county for overtime. So that's why I'm like, let's just get rid of that timekeeping, to save us the heartache of ever getting a lawsuit.
Well, and that's the understanding too, when you're salaried, is this is how much you're getting each month, no matter how many hours or how little hours, that's what you're getting, so.
And we don't do any intercompany or interdepartment type money allocation. I'm, I'm thinking from my consulting world, where, yes, I'm salaried, but I gotta charge different projects. We don't do that, so I don't see how that would be an issue.
You're still having the same dollar figure at the end of the day, though.
Right, but we charge for our time, but in the county aspect, we're not. Yeah, that's a different realm. So I'm just saying that it, it makes sense in this situation, because we don't track in between certain departments.
Gina, are you okay if I make a comment?
Pardon?
Are you okay if I make a comment? Cause this is long before my time.
You sure can.
It just wasn't consistent across the board, across departments, it's, everything's been different, so, and this was long before my position here, so.
Yep, we're trying to move toward consistency, so.
Yeah, salary exempt, really no need for time sheets. And these are positions that. Yeah, never mind.
I've read it in a book.
Alice's position.
Task force.
Okay.
Kim, yes, and Mark, Marks and Task Force. But like Jim, he basically keeps track of his hours.
Right, his salary.
No, Jim is hourly.
No, he's. Is he exempted?
He's hourly.
I don't know, there's a, there's a few other positions that probably need to be looked at, but if. But Jim does get overtime. Jim does get overtime, I.
Yeah.
There's.
Yup.
Okay.
Yeah, we got kind of a.
It's a hot pot, hotch podge of.
And once I get through the job descriptions more, that's gonna alert us to, hey, maybe this person should be salary exempt. You know, so that we might be in some more of those on staff changes.
And there is, I mean, there's, like Alice alludes to here, there's fair labor standards. I mean, it's not just a, this is something that was made up out of nowhere.
And just to kind of reiterate, there's been recent things with US Department of Labor where they're adjusting those regs. There've been history of abuses where they put somebody who's working sixty hours, okay, well now you're just salaried, we're making you management. But when you go through the checklist, there's a couple of the requirements to be a non-overtime eligible salaried employee, such as kind of setting your own hours, controlling your work environment, things of that sort. It's a complicated formula, the US Department of Labor's adds more complications to. That's why they're really getting that to the HR managers, continuing ed courses, cause there's a shift coming that is gonna hit a lot of people by surprise.
Well, I do know there was, one of the seminars I went to many years ago, there, there, you, you don't make someone salaried just to avoid overtime.
Right.
They gotta have some responsibilities and duties.
And minimum compensations usually.
Yeah. But, okay.
Anyway.
We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Any none? Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
I'm staying.
She recused.
She's abstaining. Recuse myself.
But I'll vote aye for you.
Gina, vote aye. Motion passed.
Thanks for asking my vote, though.
I never heard her say that.
She said your name isn't in that.
I'm gonna force you to vote, I'm gonna force you to vote, cause you're sitting at the table.
Old man, do you got your hair needs on now and there?
Okay, continue on, Alice.
Okay. Um, just a situation that has occurred, and just wanna make sure that we are aware of what happened. Comes back to employee didn't have enough hours, our current policy manual says if they don't have this amount of hours, then they have to pay a certain percentage of the health insurance. However, since you guys on January seventeenth moved to pay one hundred percent of the county employee's health insurance for year effective January one, that is null and void. Your board action has voided that policy in our policy manual.
Where in the policy book does it state?
In the policy book?
Yeah. What the hell are you doing, here it is. Where in the policy book does it state the, uh?
Oh, because these are the hours that we go by normally when, you know, we're paying our portion.
This is for vacation.
Employees have to have a certain amount of hours, worth of hours before they get full benefits, otherwise they have to pay.
This is vacation benefits for all employees hired on or after.
Okay, are you here?
Yeah.
Our service fee, no, here it is. Hours per month benefits eligible, zero to forty, no pay benefits, you want, you got forty-one, forty-one to eighty, fifty percent.
Okay. Okay, I didn't see that.
State's attorney over there, Mr. Todd, how do we look at it before we got that?
Now.
If we're paying a hundred percent and this was prior, before we get a hundred percent, how's this gonna affect it? That's all I, what I wanna know.
Well, I disagree that it nullifies it, uh, that portion of policy.
I, I have, that's why I'm asking, I've got mixed feelings on this, so.
I ain't got.
But, but here's the deal. Last commission meeting, we had an employee who did military service, and was a little short. There, because it's military service, um, we, we couldn't short him on that. Violation of all the provisions protecting those who are National Guard Reserve, full-time military. In this circumstance, if we've got somebody who is eligible to have the full benefit of what the commission did, and by paying a hundred percent of the health insurance, I would agree with Alice's conclusion, that no, we cannot now say, okay, now you gotta pay because you didn't work those hours.
Well, and this wasn't a situation that the employee just didn't come to work, it was an FMLA situation.
Right.
I honestly feel, looking through this, because it involves my portfolio, that this started prior to having our designated HR person, but I feel that it should have all been looked at, the amount of hours that the employee had, the amount of hours that would be worked in that timeframe, and I feel it should have been.
Okay.
Settled out a little differently, so that this situation did not happen, and then it gets sprung on this employee, and a hardship caused to this employee.
Well, if FMLA is the reason for that, no, we can't penalizing them by making them pay more than they would have had to been able to work but for the FMLA.
Is this person a full-time employee?
They're actually part. Part-time, but employee or benefit eligible.
How many hours a week are they working?
Twenty, twenty-plus. Twenty-plus, yeah.
But they've already been determined to be benefit eligible. Once they're determined, benefit eligible. If they cut back, where they wouldn't be, then that's a different discussion than we're having here.
Prior to this. Prior to, whatever, January one, was their health insurance paid for?
It was seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
It has been always seventy-five percent.
So she never paid, always paid her twenty-five percent.
After the first of the year, the commission voted to cover one hundred percent as an increased benefit.
Correct.
Yes.
Dealt with recruitment and retention. So if something comes up, unless that person changes from the minimum level to be eligible for those benefits, if their job position changes, that's different, we're talking here. What Alice is talking about, if we have somebody who because of Federal Family Leave Act, or something along that way, we can't penalize them for taking those protections.
And Jane, just so you're aware, she was only two hours short.
One point, one point seven five.
Two hours short, based on what? I'm, I'm trying not to represent the employee, but what I'm getting at is, if you, if you're on vacation or sick leave, that's like being at work. Those are just like worked hours, that, that, it does not take away from, so if I'm a forty-hour person, if I work forty hours a week, and I get benefits based on those forty hours, and I'm sick for the next three weeks, and I have the sick leave vacation, I get a hundred, I get the same as if I'm here forty hours, that does not change.
But that's not what we're looking at.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Carmen, that's not a truth.
The person went over that a lot, that earned time, but it qualifies under FMLA.
FMLA does.
Yep. And Carmen, she, that's not a truth, there was only five days of the pay period that she was off of FMLA, the whole rest of the time she was still on FMLA. Okay, but I guess the thing is, the question is like Alice said, once you guys covered a hundred percent, see, she had been even before she was off that long, she was working normal, because Jim's one who gave, told me this. She used to be paying twenty-five percent, but once we went to full-time, then she wasn't, she was covered.
Cause it was no, there was no power requirement to stay.
It was benefit eligible employees.
Cause she was eligible for that benefit, so therefore she gets a hundred percent.
And that's where, you know, like, nobody's perfect here, but I'm glad we found this out. And no, nobody, nobody wanted to make her pay. But we really didn't have a choice at the time. Cause there was, number one, we weren't aware of that, but at least it came to light now.
The main thing is like, either you're eligible by your hours, or you're ineligible.
Right.
And once you're eligible, you're paid.
You're paid a hundred percent.
So simple.
And the thing is, it's unique, because we are paying full benefits for everyone right now, and, and only this year, but that's what. But who determined that the amount needed to be taken out, like who determined? We asked Alice, we talked to Alice as soon as we saw it, and she told us.
And, and that's why like paperwork does state, if you do not have enough hours of sick leave or vacation to cover, you will be responsible for part of those premiums. However, I wasn't thinking about that we pay a hundred percent now.
Yeah. And they're also, in the FMLA paper, there's no hour requirement, and.
Right.
In that paperwork either, so.
Okay, my, the way I see this is, we, we'll, we pay for her health insurance, or we reimburse her the amount that was deducted, but going forward, we're gonna have to get some clarity in the, in the policy manual. We pay a hundred percent, but I agree that that we, we need to have probably something tiered like we did before, and we're not gonna pay a hundred percent for someone who's gonna work five hours a week.
Well, they're not eligible, they're not eligible for benefits, so it's not an issue. And if we have somebody who is employed enough to be eligible, but because of FML leave, they don't get the hours that would keep them eligible, you can't penalize them, because if we run to the old seventy-five, twenty-five, we'd still have to pay our seventy-five percent, and they still have to pay their twenty-five. So if that doesn't change now that we're paying a different percentage.
There's.
And the other question is, don't get too cart in front of the horse too far on the fact that, uh, in about another eight months, it's gonna change again.
Right. Correct, yeah.
So you're saying it's not null and void, it's just, it doesn't apply to this current year?
Correct.
And, and this situation is a one-off situation, and we should review it when a case like this comes up, so.
Right.
Since we're still talking about this case, though, she was still gaining vacation and sick leave, and that this month did not happen, so where did those hours go? Okay, that's where we looked at. I, I was trying to come back and chat with you guys yesterday, but you both were busy indoors, so it didn't get addressed, and maybe it just needs to be looked at by Gwen, because she did this transmittal. But where did? We can't. That's where we looked at that, and. Because these hours were donated.
You have this?
What's that? In the office. These hours were donated hours, but she was still gaining.
Cause the reference that was being made, I don't have.
She's still though, over the past three months while being on the.
That benefit stuff.
And so, maybe we just wanna talk about this when we look at the sheets and find with that.
Which, which is irrelevant, so to speak, irrelevant at this point, but.
Maybe we're searching for that.
Okay.
Anything we could use for her. So, yeah, let's come back, Gwen will be back tomorrow, so let's sit down and look at that. That's where we gotta figure all things. Cause I pulled all, like, I pulled, I pulled all my transmittals, I pulled all the things, and I, I just can't track a couple scribbles. Okay, good. Bring it tomorrow, and let's talk to Gwen about it, because we were searching for anything and everything we could.
I will not be here tomorrow, and I'm gonna brag on my son, I mean, I think, I'm very proud, heck, I've been telling strangers, and none of you in the room qualify as strangers. Saturday, my son graduates from University of Wisconsin Stoughton Menominee with a Bachelor of Fine Arts in Animation, magna cum laude.
That's awesome.
The animators have their senior show on Friday, I'm leaving tomorrow, I'm going to be there for the show, and make sure Grandma and Grandpa can get there. And then, starting Monday morning, I'm taking three days of hog hunting in Iowa, so I will not be back in the state until next week, Thursday night.
Thank you.
Do we have, is Lad covering then?
What's that?
Is Lad covering?
I've got Patrick and Lad set up to cover a couple of things. I will have my phone with, I will answer it, I will be checking email when I can, obviously not when I'm on the road most of tomorrow, but.
Do we need to make a motion to reimburse this employee, like, immediately?
That would be recommended.
I'll make a motion to reimburse this employee in question, the amount that was deducted from paycheck, effective immediately.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Um, Carmen, how, how fast can this be?
I assume tomorrow, she's gonna be doing checks, we made the motion, we'll get the check pulled tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And get her. No, nobody wanted this, ever. And we're doing payroll, and we talked to Alice, and.
And we're incorporating new rules and new things, but it.
I'll talk to Alice after the meeting about anything here, so.
Things happen, quick rectification, that's the best legal course.
We learn from our mistakes.
Okay, now for the discussion, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jane? Aye. Motion passed. Okay, would you get past line four already on your report?
Oh, I think so.
Uh, just one more thing I wanna just say is, the H committee will meet on the eighth of May at nine AM. And I think that's about all, yeah.
Just one thing.
Boy, you jumped right to the end.
You got, yeah, one HR, Tanya is sick today, so that's not happening.
Yeah, so that didn't happen, so they rescheduled that. And I already put in for it to be just watched later, so, cause I knew we had the commission meeting.
True.
And then we did manager training yesterday, and I think that went quite well. Um, we plan to meet again in June, first part of June, I have a team that's part of managers, so. We'll continue with that training, and I'd also like to set up some training with each of you someday as well, if you guys supervise employees as well, so. Okay, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Alice. Right? If there were any other commissioner doesn't correct me, I think we're down to portfolio updates? Okay, I haven't heard any different. Now, once again, go first. I don't have much, uh, clerk, state's attorney is here, auditor here, recorder, talked to them, not much going on, veteran service, he's, that's been quiet. Nothing on the policy committee, weed board, um, not, not much going on there, um. The only, uh, one comment I wanna make to the auditor is, um, and we'll use, um, the, um, our janitor, um, in particular, if, uh, he's gone, and you have a question, you need to talk to the, um, portfolio holder of that department, and that's of any department, if the department head's gone and you got a question, you talk to that portfolio holder, they're basically the boss of that, of that department. And if that person, that portfolio holder is unavailable, then your next step would be to contact the chairman of the commission, which, guess who that is? And if not the chairman, you contact any of, one of the other commissioners. And at that point, you, you should be able to get a contact any of us for a question, and if you feel uncomfortable, like any of my portfolios, you feel uncomfortable talking to me, you call one of the other commissioners then and talk to them, I have no problem with that. And, uh, when, when that department head is gone, so that stuff, you, you don't, don't talk to the employees first, talk to, talk, talk to us. Okay, I'm done. Rick?
Um, Extension Office, uh, I had a request to, uh, we wanna have a monthly meeting with, uh, just an informal information meeting. We haven't started that, but that's coming up, Fair Board, um, we're on track with that, we've had some hiccups, and we've been, uh. we're on track with that, we've had some hiccups and we've been fixing them as we go and we're, it's been getting closer, we got a couple months ago till fair time already, but been busy. Uh, we worked with, uh, 4H, uh, we got, I think that's pretty well ironed out now, I think, uh, yeah, we have scheduling and all that, I think all the parts are in place, and I think that's all done. P and Z, we didn't have a meeting, McEd, I didn't make that one, I was gonna go, but I will, will report on that, so, um. Sheriff's Department was the nine-one-one, and, uh, talking with Darryl, with EM, and nine-one-one stuffs, and you'll report on that, so it's like the biggest other one was the road department and I'm ready to shut my hearing aids off. But no, I signed up for it, I'm up for it, but it's like, no, it's like, uh, you know, it's, it's not going bad, we'll get there, just keep working on it, you heard a lot of this morning, so. You know where we're at. So, hopefully it's your purpose.
Okay. Like, uh, Rick said, uh, P and Z didn't meet, um, in April, um, we have a meeting here in May. One thing I'm gonna bring up in P and Z is kinda looking at our minimum lot requirements. I'll start with P and Z first and kinda get their feedback, but that could be something I bring back to the commission in the near future. We're currently at two acre minimums, um, state minimum is one acre, um, we used to be one acre, and just like to see if that's something we'd like to go back to. Um, McEd, um, met last week, um, we kinda recapped some of the previous meeting stuff, but probably the biggest thing we're looking into is, um, McEd is, is not a JDA, however, we might want to make that kind of a combined entity since we don't have a GD on the county level. We're looking into how that would work, I talked to Linda Slavik with the Association of Counties. She's gonna give me some information on some counties that have it as a joint board. Um, I handed out before the meeting, there's the, um, livestock development, um, planning grant. Just take a look at that, um, the basics of it is Lewis and Clark Development Group is, is looking just as us being a sponsor, meaning that we're in favor of them, um, pursuing the grant. Um, it's no, um, cost to the county, um, as part of that, Lewis and Clark, there's ten counties involved, and they would just like, um, a resolution that we support, um, that program. So we could probably have that on the next meeting agenda, um, they're saying as long as we had it, um, to them sometime in June, um, they'd be able to go forward with that process. So, uh, non, non-monetary participation, but just participation in support of them going after a grant to help with livestock development around the state. I know, uh, Jamie talked about the landfill, um, wages and stuff like that. Once again, talking to Linda, she was gonna give me some information on how McKenzie County does it.
I have the information from her, cause I've talked to her and I did talk to Erica again this week, so.
Okay, so something to look at during budget season on how to incorporate and, and do that, so. Just wanted to say that I talked to her too, and, um, I think it's probably something we should look into.
Yeah, Linda and I've had several conversations about it.
Yeah, and, um, library board, uh, met on Monday night, um, we'll start working on the budget here in June. There, our, our initial thought process is, um, under this year, we did three and a half mills based on our budget and how things are going, we're probably gonna be requesting only three, um, for this next year. So, a, a significant reduction on, um, money requirements for the board. Did wanna point out that there is, um, a couple positions that their term is up in June, so we should probably advertise for, um, library board positions, and then, um, my appointment is also up too, so I think at the next meeting or two, um, I'd like to stay on that. Even though it's my portfolio, we still have to, basically, as a board, um, reappoint me to a term, and that's only if I'm still a commissioner, then if I don't get re-elected, you'd have to reorganize and redo that. But, um, just thought I'd bring that, um, information forward.
That's, uh, three, three people, right? Kate, Mar, Kate, Martha, and Travis?
Correct.
Okay.
And, I mean, I think both, both of them want to do it again, they're not terming out, I think, to Donna from McLean County and one other. Cause you're allowed two terms and then you have to take off a term, they only allow you two consecutive terms, but, um, just in fairness to the public, we should probably advertise it and then, but they're interested in serving again, so. Um, and that's all the updates I have.
Okay.
Mine's gonna be pretty short because, uh, airport meeting hasn't happened yet this month, and I already reported it otherwise. Um, ambulance, though, I wanted to check with you, Carmen, did they get ahold of you?
Absolutely. We got it ready, it's up, uh, they're gonna be advertising the, in the next few weeks. I believe it's the sixteenth.
May twenty-first, it should be, yep. May twenty-first at six-thirty, it should have been.
First, yes, that's it. What do we do on that day? It's May twenty-first.
Is, they'll have that special meeting for the...
Well, it's actually an organizational meeting for the district. The ambulance is becoming a district. Riverdale's also having hours.
To see about taxes, to see if it's gonna be null and void here, cause it's gonna stay this way. So that's after a regular ambulance board meeting, then that will occur. Yep. A reminder to everybody, as Sheriff Turnus had said earlier, but just a reminder that May ninth at seven PM, there'll be the Skywarn, um, classes that they'll have here at the Law Enforcement Center. And we encourage community members to attend that. And Alice did her HR one, we're gonna do EM this afternoon. I checked in with the treasurer's office, they said everything's going well, Michelle's doing very well over there, no issues at this time.
Thank you.
LEPC is coming up here in May. The landfill's a muddy mess with all this rain, but we will never curse the rain. The road department did get her some scoria, um, can always use more, so we're still working on that.
She, they need a little more.
Yeah.
I have a, a lead, and...
Oh, yeah.
I think she knows about it, I told her about it.
Okay, all right.
Okay. The wind has been horrendous to the landfill with the garbage, so 4H, boy scouts, girls, I don't know, we've got a lot of garbage to pick out there, so it's, it's really
I noticed the road.
The wind was so awful.
I noticed county twenty-six has been a lot cleaner.
Yeah, they were, they've been busy picking, so, um, building and maintenance chiller, the new chillers are all installed, um, there was a little hiccup with glycol again, but I'm hoping that is fixed tomorrow or Friday. Thankfully, the weather stayed cool, so, um, hasn't really kicked in much. Um, I, I think Travis probably had his county commission association, but I had my NADACO board meeting, um, last Thursday, a lot of, we had Rick Becker there to talk about property taxes, and just a lot of good discussions having about where kind of the futures of counties are going and what the association's gonna do, it was a really, um, good productive meeting, so, um...
And they're anticipating that they'll have enough signatures?
Yeah.
They have it on the ballot in November, so.
Yes. Yes.
They're anticipating that they will have the thirty-one thousand and some odd signatures to remove property taxes on the November ballot, so.
So there's gonna be a lot of educational campaigns and stuff coming out if need be, and they've worked hard on it, so. Had social services meeting also last Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, I don't, um, a lot of talk about indirect expenses and, um, I don't know if the state, Carmen, has reached out to you, they were gonna, um, meet with every auditor across the state with how to bill indirect and direct expense, expenses, so if Jason hasn't gotten to you, you're, you're on his list. So, just a lot of education with these new zone boards and, and stuff, so the state is working well on that. And West Central also had a meeting that afternoon, but I was driving home from the other two meetings, so. Um, I did catch the recap, the central's just a ever-changing, ever-growing, not enough mental health services across the state, so. I think that's it.
Okay. I guess, there being no further items on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.
What's that?
This resolution, is it from Lewis and Clark, you said?
Yep. Yeah, it's just an example resolution, um, we'll have to make some edits to it.
Okay. What edits you wanna make? Yes.
I'll, I'll, I'll look at you in the...
Until one o'clock.
Yep. That'll work.